Okay, welcome, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Excellent. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Pulaski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
President.
President Allen?
Here. Okay, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Matt, would you like to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding hearings, comments, and closed session.
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes, period. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed-session meeting minutes of May 7th and May 21st, 2024? Anybody?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to reports. Mayor Fagan.
Thank you. Okay. On Wednesday, June 12th, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Summit's Office of Emergency Management will be holding a large-scale training exercise with the Summit Public Schools and officials from Union County, the State of New Jersey, and federal agencies. It will take place at several locations throughout Summit, including Summit High School, City Hall, the Summit Transfer Station, Fountain Baptist Church, and the Community Center, among others. Notifications to the community from the city and Summit Public Schools will be sent out early next week advising residents and families about the training exercise to avoid any concerns raised by road closures and increased activity among police, fire, and EMS during simulations. These types of exercises are necessary to help us prepare in the event of an actual emergency and allow first responders the practice they need to keep us safe. More information will be available on the city website and social media channels next week. And for Summit High School students and families, they are still, as far as I know, looking for volunteers, parent or guardian and a student to participate in the exercise. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Administrator Rogers?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. There is a revised schedule for construction work on Ridge Dale Avenue. Sewer repairs are scheduled for Thursday, tomorrow, June 6th, and Friday, June 7th. And milling and paving operations are scheduled to begin on or about Monday, June 10th, weather permitting. Work will be performed between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Road closures and detours will be in effect during project work, and police will be on site to direct traffic. Contractor will notify residents in the affected area prior to the start of milling and paving. Residents should park on neighboring side streets during milling and paving operations. The road will be closed during milling and paving and for a few hours after paving is complete until the pavement has fully cured. Union County will be performing overnight milling and paving operations on Baltosroll Road between Glenside Avenue and the Route 78 overpass beginning Thursday, June 13th, and continuing for approximately six nights, weather permitting. Work will be performed between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., and sections of the road will be fully closed when crews are working in the area. Detours will be in effect, and police will be on site to direct traffic. More information and project updates are available on the Union County website. The link is posted on the City of Summit Construction Update Pages at cityofsummit.org/construction. The county informed the Division of Engineering earlier today that the contractor is running one day behind the originally scheduled start, a date of June 12th, which is currently posted on the county website. Another reminder of the City of Summit's summer hour schedule is in effect through Friday, August 30th. City offices will be open for business between 8:00 a.m. and close at 4:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. On Fridays, the offices will be open at 8:00 a.m. and close at 1:00 p.m. The construction office in the Department of Community Services will operate under a modified summer schedule. The office will be open Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:30, and on Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then lastly, this Saturday, June 8th, is the Summit Free Market from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Summit Transfer Station. Summit residents with a valid transfer station permit are permitted to attend. Please see cityofsummit.org for more information.
Excellent.
That's all I have for this evening. Thank you very much.
Not yet. Oh, yeah.
With the free market closed, just a reminder that the dog park is also closed. So don't go and be disappointed like I have.
Good to know. Thank you for that. And I just want to say my favorite project, the road project that's happened, is Division. It looks excellent. Yeah. And I love the sign that was put up. It's an electronic sign that says, "No speeding, or we will return the potholes." So. Well done. Clever, sir. It is clever. All right. So thank you for the good work. Okay, I have an update on two upcoming meetings, the common council meetings. The first is a special meeting that's going to be held next Tuesday, June 11th, at 7:30. It is a public hearing for council to consider a final passage of an ordinance to establish the new Morris Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone, which was introduced at the May 21st, 2024 meeting. It was unanimously deemed by the planning board not to be inconsistent with the master plan, which is a double negative, which means that it's consistent. Since we are having a special hearing next week just on this action, all questions, comments, and discussions will be held off until next week. Additionally, please mark your calendars. Our originally scheduled council meeting on Monday, June 17th, has been rescheduled to Monday, June 24th, at 7:30 in the chamber because of the middle school graduation. So that will be that. That's the announcements. Okay. Next, we have ceremonial awards and two proclamations. So Mayor Fagan, please go to the lectern to present. The first will be the Lewis Bay Scholarship State Semi-finalist, Sarah. And I'm going to say, Dhuang?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay.
Sure, Mayor.
Sorry, Mayor. Do we have anyone to take a picture, too?
Yes, we do. Dory Fasgate's here.
Oh, wonderful. Is Dory here?
Dory's here.
Is that on? Is that working?
Yeah. I think so. Just, yeah, nice and close.
Yeah, you turned it on, right? Okay. So congratulations, Sarah, and thank you for participating. I'm here to present the certificate of participation for the state semifinalist, Sarah Dhuang, on behalf of Summit City, for your interest in civic contributions to the community, as evidenced by your participation in the 30th Annual Lewis Bay Second Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship Competition. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The first will be the Summit Free Public Library. So please come on up, ladies. You can stand. I know. This is always awkward. I don't really know. Oh, yeah. Perfect. Okay. Whereas, the Summit Free Public Library has been a pillar of the community since the Summit Library Association was first formed 150 years ago in 1874. And whereas, the library has long served as a trusted institution striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community. And whereas, the library offers the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions no matter where they are on life's journey. And whereas, the library is an accessible and inclusive place that promotes a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas, the library has continued to adapt to the ever-changing needs of the City of Summit, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the population it serves. And whereas, the library is a treasured institution that preserves our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas, the library is an essential public good and fundamental institution working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas, the Summit Free Public Library continues to embrace its mission to inform, enrich, and inspire, thereby creating a thriving community for a better tomorrow. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim June 8th, 2024, as Summit Free Public Library Day, concluding the library's anniversary celebration with festivities on the Village Green and urge everyone to utilize the vast number of resources and services offered by the library and to thank the library's staff for all that they do to benefit the community. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this fifth day of June in the year 2024. Thank you. Let's go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to reiterate that this Saturday on the Village Green from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., we'll have a family-friendly Happy Birthday to the Library celebration, and we just urge everyone to come, and thank you so very much. Thank you.
And I want to say again, thank you to all of you for the wonderful work you do. I had the pleasure, along with Michael Rogers and many others, of spending a nine-to-four day, nine-to-three day, at the library doing a strategic planning retreat. So that was really interesting, and I think there were a lot of good things that came out of that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. And the next proclamation, and then I hopefully won't, you won't hear from me too much the rest of the evening, is our National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Come on up. Hello. How are you? Thanks for being here. Okay. Whereas, every day, 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of nearly 18,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas, cities across the nation, including the City of Summit, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas, on National Gun Violence Awareness Day, we wear the color orange, which symbolizes the value of human life, in hopes that it will help raise awareness by honoring the lives lost and human hardship endured due to gun violence. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim the 7th of June, 2024, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Summit, and hereby encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 7th day of June in the year 2024. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Very kind of you. May I make a statement? Okay. Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to make a statement. I'm Diane Dresdahl. I'm, was a longtime Summit resident, recently moved, and I miss this place. But any event, I'm here as a gun violence awareness chairman for National Council of Jewish Women, as well as a Moms, hi, where's me? Moms Action member, active member. And I just want to read this statement about Gun Violence Awareness Day. Every year during the final weekend in June, Americans come together and wear orange to demand that elected officials act to end gun violence. This year, National Gun Violence Awareness Day falls on June 7th, 2024. Will the Wear Orange events across the country this year spark renewed awareness in the epidemic of gun violence? A little over two years ago, in May 2022, the country was horrified by the mass school shooting at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas, where 19 elementary school children and two adults were gunned down, killed like fish in a pond, or a barrel, actually, by a shooter with a military-grade weapon, while nearly 400 officers from federal, state, and local law enforcement waited to act for more than an hour until a Border Patrol tactical team arrived and breached the classroom. That year, a week afterwards, we had a Gun Violence Awareness Day rally in Summit that attracted 500 people and many prominent speakers and elected officials. I think it made an impact. But my next sentence is, but should it take a mass shooting to wake us up? I'm going to reiterate some of the things that the mayor said, but hopefully some new ones. Here are some of the everyday deadly facts regarding gun violence. Gun violence is the number-one cause of death for children in the United States. Over 116 people die daily from gun violence every day. On average, 327 people are shot and injured. Americans are 26 times more likely to be shot and killed than those living in other high-income countries. Access to firearms triples the risk of suicide, and the U.S. averages one mass shooting per day. One more fact, the U.S. has more guns per capita worldwide with an estimated 120.5 firearms for every 100 people. Okay, we need to help this end this uniquely American epidemic. And to do so, I'm asking you to please attend an event marking Gun Violence Awareness Day this weekend. Numbers count. For information about where you can find an event, you should go to the Wear Orange, just plug in Wear Orange on Google, and you will find plenty of events around the country and here locally. Importantly, we had a Wear Orange rally scheduled in Summit, but is now being canceled due to unforeseen circumstances. The speakers who were to speak were leaders in the field of gun violence prevention, gun violence prevention advocacy, or tragically and detrimentally people who are affected by gun violence. The speakers included First Assistant New Jersey Attorney General Lindsay Rutolo, the Director of North Community Street Team, Ronaldo Chavez, Dr. Liza Chowdhury, the Executive Director of Patterson Healing Collective, New Jersey State Senator John McKeon, gun violence survivors, Orage Rivers for Jamie, which is Jamie Guttenberg, a young lady who's a junior in high school in Livingston, was speaking on behalf of that and has raised money for that organization, which is in response to the Parkland mass shooting. Speakers were to be on the roster from Brady, New Jersey, Students Demand Action, March for Our Lives, New Jersey, Ceasefire, New Jersey, Legal Witness Voters, Teachers Unify Against Gun Violence, and others. Consulman Greg Vartan was among our speakers. It is unfortunate that we will not be able to proceed with the Summit rally, but we urge you to go to the Wear Orange National Gun Violence Awareness website for locations in our area. It is critical to our future of our children that in November, we elect national and local candidates who will act to enact gun violence prevention legislation. The vote is the only weapon we all have. So on this National Gun Violence Awareness Day, let's show up and demand to make our communities free of gun violence, honor the lives lost to gun violence, and acknowledge the lives tragically changed forever. Thank you. Wait, Diane? Diane, I just wanted to know why it got canceled? Because... Just some circumstances I wish. I'll speak to you privately. Okay. No, I just, I think... Councilwoman Hamlet?
I think it's important, I think it's an important day, and I just want to understand why it was canceled. Is it something that the city can help with, or?
Yeah.
I just, I think we've done it in the past. What's the reason that it got canceled? I don't know, but I would like to know if there's anything that we can do to, to help you have this event. I don't know all the details, but if there's, I'd like to say that I think it's a very important event, and if there's anything we can do, I don't know why it got canceled, but if there's, I have no idea. It's first I'm hearing of it, so.
All right. We'll talk offline, I guess. Right? Offline? Yeah, I didn't know it was canceled either. All right. I'm moving on.
But can I, I just...
Okay. Would you like me to speak to it? Yeah, I mean, if there's anything you can say, Rose.
Because the narrative's going to be that we canceled it. I don't think we did, so, okay. I just want to be very clear. We didn't cancel the event. Okay.
I didn't. If there's something that wasn't ready or wasn't prepared, that's a different story. I just want to be clear that we... Yeah. All right. Okay. All right. Historical Minute. Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. Today, we have Summit High School senior Matt Lameo, who's going to come and speak on the history of Summit Railways. Thank you, Matt, for coming. I think he's a very involved student here in town. I think marching band, drum major, yeah?
Drum line.
Okay. And heading to Wake Forest next year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Pulaski, and for everyone else having me up here. I know many of us think rail in Summit's just New Jersey transit delays and all the like, but I do persist that there is a lot of hidden secret in history to our rail lines in Summit. So if we begin. Our story starts over 200 years ago. The Morristown and Essex Railways Extension from its terminal station in Newark to Morristown crossed through Summit at milepost 22, beginning on January 1st, 1838. The current Summit Station, as we all know it, was constructed between 1904 and 1905 by the M&amp;E. The tracks were always sunk 16 feet below ground in the infamous mile-long cut, which still remains today. The Morristown and Essex Railroad was acquired by the Delaware, Lackawanna, and Western in 1868, retaining control over this line and its service. At street level, however, a now-long-lost track was initially constructed to the Passaic and Delaware branch of the M&amp;E Railway. This spur was the only section of the failed New Jersey West Line Railroad, a greater plan to connect the state via rail, to be constructed between Summit and Bernardsville. The DL&amp;W, now supervising the Morrison and Essex operations, took over this branch in 1882, extended service to Gladstone, where it remains as a branch line today. Simultaneously, across Broad Street, the third extension of the Rahway Valley Railroad opened in Summit on July 26, 1906, from Roselle Park, with passenger service beginning a week later. This short line, much smaller in size and scope than the DL&amp;W, serviced freight and passengers throughout the region. It constructed its competing terminal station at the base of Overlook Mountain adjacent to Broad Street, now occupied by the most recent stretch of the Park Line, which opened recently. The terminal station at Summit, now demolished, consisted of a three-track yard, a passenger building and ticket office, and a water tower for steam locomotives. The construction of this Rahway Valley line into Summit, however, was not without issues. When initially constructing the line, the Rahway Valley's illegal street encroachment onto the Ashwood Avenue Bridge, still present today, caused city officials to tear it down overnight in protest. A New York Times article dated October 7, 1905, under the title "Pugnacious Summit" details how city councilmen met secretly to agree to tearing the bridge down, with the city's steamroller pulling the iron supports to the street with a chain. The Rahway Valley, however, could not stay out of legal trouble within the city. Summit was chosen for always terminus because of its attractive connection to the DL&amp;W, its route, and its customers. The DL&amp;W rejected an initial proposition to connect the railways in the fall of 1906. It's interesting to note that while the bridge over Broad Street, then called Park Avenue, was built in 1906 with its initial construction into Summit, it is unclear how much this bridge was used before the connection was finally established later on in the century. With the help of Summit-based lawyer Alma McKiergen, the Rahway Valley took the matter to the Interstate Commerce Commission. On June 24, 1908, the ICC ordered the railways to connect. The DL&amp;W, however, was still not taking it. In addition to physically blocking the Rahway Valley workers from finishing the connection by placing locomotives on the stub end of its yard track to connect the two railroads, their appeal with the U.S. Circuit Court was successful in October of 1908, with the Circuit Court trumping the ICC's order for a connection, therefore ceasing this agreement and ordering railways to stay separate. Finally, the matter escalated to the Supreme Court. On March 7, 1910, in the case of ICC versus DL&amp;W, Justice Oliver Holmes ruled in favor of the Lackawanna, citing the DL&amp;W cannot block, can block such a connection because the Rahway Valley is, quote, "not a lateral branch line of railroad," and is therefore too large to force a connection. Ultimately, a connection was formed under the economic pressure of the Great Depression in March of 1930. Additional tracks were constructed at Summit Yard to connect the two railroads and switch cars between the two. Rail service in the Rahway Valley and Summit ceased in April 7, 1976, with trackage abandoned soon after. Service continued along the DL&amp;W throughout the 20th century. In addition to its frequent commuter service to Hoboken Terminal, the Lackawanna also ran a series of long-distance trains through Summit and further west to Scranton, Buffalo, Chicago, and Cleveland. In 1960, the Lackawanna and Erie railroads merged to form the Erie-Lackawanna. And it's interesting to note that the colors of this railroad were maroon and gold, which I can neither confirm nor deny. I have a link to our town's colors and the high school colors as well. As the century drew to a close, New Jersey Transit took over the ELS commuter service in 1983, keeping rail service from Summit relatively similar to what it stands today. In 1996, the community connection allowed the Morrison and Essex line to fly over the northeast corridor tracks and connect into Penn Station. Before this, service south of Morrison and Essex would only run into Hoboken. While commuter service may seem mundane today, there's still much to consider in routing the rails. Our original M&amp;E station remains in the National Register of Historic Places. Summit Tower is still visible from the east end of the platform closest to New York City. You may have seen it and never known what it was for, but it's where railway crews used to pick up their waybills before departing with their freight cars across the state. The elevated track in Summit Yard, which you can see leaving the station east towards New York City, was the connection between the two railroads. If you look closely out of the parking lot of the Slano-Dwane, you can visualize the alignment of this connection with a now-lost bridge over Broad Street, which was demolished in 1992 to make height for cars. Remnants of Rahway Bridges can still be seen at Ashwood Avenue and Russell Place. And of course, Summit Park Line follows the route of this abandoned railroad as it snakes its way through town. The history of Summit's rail, however, is still being written. Proposed Amtrak service from New York to Scranton will run through Summit along the abandoned Lackawanna cutoff across the Water Gap. This will, yet again, write another chapter in the often-overlapped history of Summit's railroads. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
And I've sent Clerk Licketties some pictures for her to share with you all. This, I couldn't make the slideshow, but it's a lot of interesting pictures, some old postcards, some old diagrams drawing, some really cool stuff. So I encourage you all to check it out, and thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. We're going to move on to public comments. We, let's see. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about topics not on today's business agenda. Whenever a member of the audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, or if you have a question that did not get answered tonight, please provide a copy of your statement or your questions to the cityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. It's important to note that we want everyone to be heard, so please, when you come up, speak into the microphone. Only one person should speak at a time, and please provide your name and home address. Finally, to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, please limit comments to three minutes. Okay? Public comments open.
Good evening. Peter Savillo, 11 Greenfield Avenue in Summit. I'm not sure what department within the city this should be directed to, but the license plate reader at the transfer station needs to be updated. Nine times out of 10, nine times out of 10 or more, it does not go to green when I pull[1742.19] it does not go to green when I pull up there. And a lot of times, the woman in the booth will just flag me through on a red light. It's been that way for probably two, three years now. And at one point, I had spoken with someone, I think they indicated that, well, I have one of the older blue license plates, and that was an issue. Well, then upgrade the software so it reads the license plate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Anthony DeSantis.
All right, go ahead, Anthony.
Anthony DeSantis, Canoe Brook Parkway. I'm curious on the bond ordinances.
Anthony, will you hold that thought? Because that's on our agenda tonight, and I do want to hear what you have to say.
Oh, okay.
But for public comment, it's for anything not on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't know it was on the agenda.
That's, are you talking about?
I don't see it on the agenda.
Yep, yes, it is on, it is on the agenda. You're talking about the bond that to, for Canoe Brook Parkway?
For Canoe Brook Parkway.
Yes, 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 that's on the agenda.
The last time I was here, 16 years ago.
Oh, my goodness.
Canoe Brook Parkway. So, okay.
But don't leave, we'll come back to you. You're gonna?
That'll be great.
Yeah, when we do the ordinance. Thank you. It's a long time to be gone from here.
Will Von Klemper, V-O-N-K-L-E-M-P-E-R-E-R, 156 Colonial Road. When we had our budget review last month, I inquired what money was in the budget for community health and safety in the context of environmental factors. That meeting, which was rambunctious, did not get back to that question, but I followed up with you all. It has come back to me through the Finance Committee, through Councilman Miniger, that of our money in the budget, there is little or no spending for these things, capital budget or expense budget. We will apparently apply for grants as money from other levels of government become available, but that's not directly under our control. With respect, I think it's a bad miss. I'm going to assume it's an omission and not a policy. In baseball, we wait till next year, but environmental deficits are insidious. The clock keeps tipping, ticking, things pile up. So I'm asking you, I know you've approved the budget, if you will find ways this year, right now, to improve air. If nothing else, list all the chemicals that the city uses and the contractors uses. Test them where appropriate. Think about how our fleet of city vehicles can become less polluting. I mean, we all know the list. There's no waiting till next year. Thank you. Will you undertake that? Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Cowmanson, 67 Butler Parkway. Tonight, I would like to ask our newly-elected mayor and council members if they intend to keep the promises they made to Summit during the last election season. You made promises during your campaign, promises that you were breaking by continuing to entertain the proposal of lighting Tatlock. You promised to preserve the character of Summit, yet stadium lighting will forever change the character of the Tatlock neighborhood. Does your desire to preserve the character of Summit neighborhoods not extend to the Washington community? Perhaps not. Let's remember when Councilman Smallwood stated, "That is what our suburb is: beautiful architecture, tree-lined streets, amazing sunsets from Bryant Park, Memorial Field, and the Village Green. I pledge to protect and enhance the character of our charming suburb." Councilman Smallwood, I live on a tree-lined street and can see amazing sunsets from my dining room window over Tatlock Field. Is my family part of your suburb? Will you protect and enhance the character of my street, or are you going to destroy it by supporting 80-foot lights in my front yard? You promised to reunite us as a community. Another broken promise. The divisions in our community continue to grow deeper. If you're serious about bringing everyone together, we must find another way. Let's work together to find a solution that meets the needs of the town's sports programs without burdening members of the community. We should optimize the field space that we have by creating a new field scheduling system, new field user policy, factoring in the new space that will open up at the lower high school field this fall, and working with the private schools in town on an agreement for use of their fields. We can find a solution that gives the sports teams what they need while allowing the Tatlock neighborhood to continue to enjoy the quality of life they're used to. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is David Hoffman. I live at 1 New England Avenue. I like to say Suite 17A, but it's an apartment. I'm nervous. I feel like a Christian scientist with appendicitis, but here it goes anyway. The decisions made on how to best use a parcel of land which the old firehouse sits on will be remembered for decades by future residents and their children. Imagine a facility that can be used for recreation by all age groups, game rooms, activities designed for our community groups, a luncheonette, and essential shops for seniors and others who watch their pennies. And finally, a comprehensive cultural arts performance center. This might house an art gallery, performance space for theater, film festivals, dance recitals, music performances of all genres, even a poetry slam. The use of the space would be limited only by our imagination. Of course, you know I'm referring to the old firehouse. We could name the facility SERPAC, Summit Recreation and Performance Arts Center. But that means we must imagine. What do you imagine Summit will look like in five, 10, 15, 20 years? Will we continue to be a town with beautiful homes and shops, where residents can get their nails done, hair done, enjoy a burger for $1,895, and then go home and be done? But I imagine more. I imagine giving a tour to prospective residents, saying, "Hey, here's our town center. No need to point out how beautiful it is." Our train station, everybody loves choo-choo trains. The middle school, a cathedral to education. A library with a fully-staffed research facility. Thank you, Andrew Carnegie. Connections and YMCA, where we all work it out. But here is our newest jewel, the Summit Recreation Performing Arts Center, open morning, afternoons, and evenings, where we meet, gather, eat, and play. The uses of this space is only limited by our ability to imagine what would be possible beyond building blocks for revenue. There will be many opportunities for that, but what can we do that would better, that would be better for all of us who call Summit our home? How do we see our town in the coming decades? Let's build something wonderful, surprising, exciting, satisfying for all our recreational, intellectual, and artistic spirits. It could be a place where we all welcome to meet, eat, play, a recreational-cultural banquet where all may feast. It will take time to plan and even more time to build, but that's what happens when you build for your parents, yourselves, your children, and your children's children. Let us imagine that. And I finished with 10 seconds left.
Excellent. Thank you.
If he wants to give me a statement, Mr. Hoffman.
Mr. Hoffman, would you like to give Clerk Lickettis your statement? Or do you want? Thank you very much. Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comments. I do want to go to Director Schrager for one minute about the license plate reader for the transfer station.
Through you, Council President. It's actually monitored and operated by Parking Services, but I'm happy to work with them to look at the system. There is some truth to the older license plates or faded license plates do struggles, and it's also when you have direct sunshine is some issue, but we're aware of some complaints, so I'll reach out to Nicole and see what we can do to kind of expedite any improvements.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, through you, Council President. I guess, Councilman Miniger, you and I have been on parking for the last couple of years, and I think it might be something that we can also address with the Technology Committee. I mean, I know it's tough, the Wi-Fi signal, but I think that, can we give the community a timeframe in which they can expect? I'm not sure what the answer is, but I know you're the tech guy, so I don't know if you have any thoughts, but you're the technology expert, but.
We looked at that. It was, um, it was a lot about, it was the light, the angle, the time of day, the internet connection. We boosted that. We boosted the speed of it. It's a, I think it's a, it's probably a, it's a combination of software and hardware.
Is that something that a J could help us? Like the tech got this? Nothing? No, okay, all right.
Councilman Smallwood?
I mean, I personally think if we're gonna have someone there anyway, do we need both the license plate reader and someone there waving people on? I mean, I think it's, we're spending double the money. I think we should have either a working license plate reader that's gonna work 100% of the time, or 99.9% of the time, or have someone there monitoring it. I don't necessarily think that we should have both. And Councilman Miniger and I will certainly work with Director Schrager from the parking standpoint and come to some sort of resolution pretty quickly. And from a timeline standpoint, we will have it in our next committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Administrator Rogers, do you want to talk about the environmental piece in terms of the budget? You had said something to us in finance, so just that there are things that are embedded. It's hard to peel everything out.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I think there were, it was a very good question, and it's a, I looked at it in a much broader scope and analysis of the budget. I think there are things that could potentially be accounted for. It's a rather large sort of undertaking to just go through that and do the type of accounting that, that this gentleman's looking for. And then we talked about, there's also the Community Energy Plan that we have that the Environmental Commission is actively engaged with implementing with, primarily with the Department of Community Services. There's a lot of things we are doing, but I think, yes, there's some, there's some major environmental issues, and I can appreciate his advocacy for that. And we're looking at, you know, building out an infrastructure for our own fleets, which is, you know, sort of goes to the emissions topic. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of things, but we just, it wasn't something that we could readily give an answer to and nor would it, it would require a great deal of time and effort to kind of really truly evaluate it the way I think he would expect it to be evaluated, so.
So, more to come.
Council President?
I can't go back and forth, I'm so sorry. Who said Council President? Oh, Councilman Smallwood?
Mr. Von Klemper, thank you very much for your comments. I do remember you coming up at the, was it last council meeting or the council meeting before? One of the things that, other than beautiful tree-lined streets and sunsets that I campaigned on, it was also to introduce solar to our municipal buildings. Director Schrager, and I have talked about this a couple of times, and I think there are certain, certainly some opportunities. One at the Free Market Building at the transfer station, but I think that there are other opportunities beginning here in our own municipal, municipal city hall, as well as our newer structures, such as the community center, that would be able to support solar. So, I'm certainly gonna be pushing for that. Also, from the Parking Committee, with Councilman Miniger, we've discussed increasing EV stations for electric vehicles. So, we were, we are certainly discussing that and looking into adding more EV stations in our parking lots and garages, as well as city hall.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. You know, we can take it offline, but Councilman Miniger, since you're the Chair of Finance and you mentioned, do you have anything else to add?
Well, so, Will, your question was, was good, and I think it just, it made us take a look and think about, yeah, it's a lot of grant money. Grant money is definitely important in this, and that's the main thing that I saw and that we talked about, was how we address environmental issues was through grants availability. But you had, I mean, you brought up a good point, that this is an opportunity for, to look at the budget when it's being created through an environmental concern lens, which I think just, we didn't do it. I think it's probably something that can be done going forward, for sure.
We can discuss more offline. I know, I'm sorry. I can't go back and forth. Happy to have a conversation after this, though. Okay? Okay, so, moving on to ordinances. I think I got all the questions. And I thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for your ideas. I love bowling alleys, I think. Anyway, okay, so, moving on to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
Ordinance number 24-3313, bond ordinance appropriating $5,550,100 and authorizing issuance of $4,095,100 in bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Excellent. Okay, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is a bond ordinance appropriating $5,550,100 and authorizing the issuance of $4,095,100 in bonds or notes for various capital improvements, including down payments on those projects, as specified in this year's budget. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
A second. Excellent. Okay, the hearing is open. Council comments. Councilwoman Hamlet?
I just have one, I guess, one question or comment, I guess. Sorry, I'm just trying to. You know, it's okay, we'll wait for the hearing, and then if it gets covered. I know, I want to hear the public comments, but I guess my question, Tammy, and you're gonna, I should have asked this in finance, and I know you're gonna, I know, you're gonna kill me. Why did we add the United States Treasury regulations in this one? Is, was there a reason in the, in Section 2? It's always in there? Okay, so that's not, that's not anything new this year? Because I know we always reference the local bond law of New Jersey, but I wasn't sure if we always had to recognize the Treasury in there. I know, it's just a nuance, but I just was curious because I didn't.
Can you hear me?
I know I should have asked him in finance, and I apologize.
Through you, Council President. Bond counsel prepares those in accordance with the law?
Got it.
So that if it's a wow for the bond sale?
Okay.
So, if anything changes, they add what's necessary so that?
Perfect. I just noticed it this morning, and I was just kind of like, what's the difference? But so, basically, that comes from our bond counsel. It's written, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Any public comments? Whoa, okay, wait. Diego, come, come, come. No, no, Diego, you can come.
I'm not sure.
This'll be the one. This'll be the one. This is the one. But wait, yeah, go ahead. You can either stand in line or wait, yeah.
Good evening. I'm Diego Hoic, Nargal Court.
Hold on one second. Diego, I want you to get your full time. Okay.
That won't be necessary, but I have three, but my name is Diego Hoic, Nargal Court. First, I do want to pause for a minute and remember the brave soldiers who 80 years ago, today, were floating on the English Channel on their way to Normandy, France, to fight Nazism and Fascism. I'm gonna use some of my time for that. I do have two simple questions that I grouped here. One is completely related to this, the other one isn't. How do I reconcile the spending that's being approved with our approved capital budget? It's a question of where do I check the boxes, so to speak? How do I know how much to assign to each line of the capital budget? Because there is down payments, there's all sorts of different things, so that's the first question. The second question is, every how many years do we repave a street, on average, or repaint a parking lot, on average? Those are my two comments.
Well, I'll go to Director Schrager first. Yep, about the street, the time for the street and the parking lot. How long does it take? Or how long do you?
Yes, thank you, through you, Council President. Typically, it's a function of its use and its traffic volume, so it does vary. The industry will kind of say 15 years, which will work for most low-volume residential streets. I can't say that's for every street here, so some might be 10 to 12 years. Some might be 20 to 25 years if it's your lesser cul-de-sacs. I will just say with the new pavement that's being specified by the Federal Highway Administration and State DOT, which is using a lot less asphalt binder, which is good for the environment, as well as more recycled product, you will see that streets are not lasting the way they used to. But typically, we aim for 15 years, and we try to assist getting to that point by doing the micropave program, which is really just a pavement preservation treatment to get us further to that 15-year mark, so. Parking lots, I could just speak to just a little bit. We just started working with Parking Services to do a complete inventory of their parking lots. It just really says, what do we have there in terms of number of spaces, dimensions, when it was last paved, so I can't answer specifically. I can just say that since I've been here 16 years, none of them have been paved twice. So, you know, it's probably in that 15-year range as well, but they've also had crack sealing and some treatment to kind of preserve them as well, so.
Excellent. And then we have an ordinance not to open up the road every, until, for five years, right? Once we pave it, we're not supposed to open it up, but can you just talk a little bit about? about that, just in case? Because some roads that have been paved, PSENG snuck in and shouldn't have.
Yes, which is, is the battle we always fight continuously for, for years, and will continue to fight. But essentially, a road is like your body, you know? Once it's cut open, it's never going to be the same. I mean, you can get it pretty good, but there's always going to be a seam there, which allows water penetration, which then allows, you can get the cracking, the freeze thaw cycle, which will kind of reduce the life you get out of it, which is why we really try to stay on top of potholes and cracking. So, yes, utility companies, when they come in, we do try to get them to pave as much as possible to extend the life of the road, or not allow them to open the road unless it's an emergency, because the moratorium to prevent that, so we can prolong the life of our roads.
Right. And the moratorium is five years?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay. CFO Baldwin?
Through you, Council President. Mr. Hoick, if you take a look at the capital plan that's in the budget presentation online, and you do not add in the SOAR parking as they're dealt with in subsequent ordinances on this agenda this evening, you will see all of the projects in the gross amount are appropriated. You'll also see that there's an additional amount, I believe it's 225,000, that's for Section 20 costs, so it's not going to add up exactly. Those costs are soft costs related to the actual construction or purchasing costs of items in the capital budget. You'll also note that in the ordinance, there's an amount appropriated, and then there's an amount authorized to go out to debt for. So, the amount authorized to go out to debt for is lower, that's because it takes into consideration the necessary down payment, and also the grants that are appropriated in the capital budget.
Thank you. Okay. Who's next?
DeSantis.
Oh, great, okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
Come on up. Oh, wait, Danny, can you, yeah, sorry, yeah, come, come.
Anthony DeSantis, Canoe Brook Parkway.
Welcome back.
Back.
Wait, wait, one second. Okay, all right.
We're good?
We have three minutes.
All right, so.
Got it, sorry.
From what I'm gathering, is that we're borrowing money to tear up Canoe Brook Parkway. Is the council aware that it's about six months old? It's brand new. Just heard that the average lifespan of a road in Summit is 15 years. How is that possible? Doesn't it sound pretty wasteful? Six months, brand new, never looked so good. I've lived on the street for 33 years. This is the second time in my life that this issue has come up, but the old timers, the people that were there before me, they also went through this. So, this is a third time. It's as though this project is put on a shelf, and it's like, don't worry about it, we'll get here later. Don't worry about it, we're persistent, we're going to build this, whatever it is that you want to do, no matter what. Wasteful, terribly wasteful. Every time I drive by the firehouse, I say, my God, we built a Taj Mahal. When I go into new towns, different towns, I always look at their firehouses now, and I say, wow, what a firehouse we have. Wasteful, we don't need it. Canoe Brook Parkway, 15 years, we should be visiting this issue. Not now, brand new. So, any kind of fiscal responsibility that this council might have, please, don't tear up this, this road. The money, use it, use it on sidewalks. The inventory of sidewalks in this town is disgraceful. They're all busted up. Trees, everybody loves trees, but trees and sidewalks don't go together. And what happens is, the sidewalks become impassable, and everybody's back in the street with their baby carriages. It's just concentrate on what we have before you tear up what's brand new, brand new. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any, okay.
Want to comment, or are we waiting for...
Are you coming up, Peter? Let Peter come up, yep. Hold that thought, I'll come back to you.
Good evening, Peter LeJoy, 124 Canoe Brook Parkway, Summit, New Jersey. I come here with even, even a more specific request. I think this item should be pulled from the bond ordinance, and I think the bond ordinance should be amended. This was an ill-conceived plan from the prior administration, which is totally unnecessary. PSENG just completely repaved Canoe Brook Parkway. We were promised last fall that there would be a meeting with the city to discuss what the project is, and I don't think I really know what the project is. People talk about extending the median all the way up to Hartley Road, which is ridiculous. That's totally absurd. The road is used heavily for parking for our football, our athletic games on Saturdays, and we have this, we've suddenly come up with another pot of money. The subbase, as Mr. DeSantis mentioned, has already been replaced. It's very sturdy. I've been on roads around the corner that were dug up by PSENG, and they're just dirt and stone. I think this is just really, you know, a lack of good planning. I also think that this is a tremendous lack of transparency on the prior administration. I also think we need to do a better job putting our budgets and information onto the website. I looked for this grant, it is nowhere to be found on the website. I was able to get it from DOT, because my request to the city was not specific enough. The city knew exactly what I was talking about, and I really think, you know, there's a way to amend the bond ordinance. This money doesn't have to be spent for two years from when Nora Rader signed the grant. And I really think it's time to send a message to the community that we're interested in using money where it's needed. You know, if you want to ask me, I think Woodland is much more dangerous than Canoe Brook. And I also think none of these improvements are going to solve the safety problem. The way to solve the safety problem would have been to hire four police officers instead of two, due to the intransigence of certain council members, and to have targeted monitoring of traffic through the city, and do it aggressively, and give tickets to people that are doing a couple of miles over the speed limit, and give those tickets to people that are doing 10 miles over the speed limit, because that's a four-point violation. And maybe we can even tell our prosecutor to stop using the statute that lets people wave off and hold them responsible for the speeding. I mean, there, this is a safety issue, this has nothing to do with the project. And I really would ask the council to take a step and pull this bond and amend it, you can bring it back in seven days.
Thank you.
You advertise it in two days, and you can reconsider.
Mr. LeJoy, thank you for your comment. Yeah. Can we pause for a second? Do you want to talk a little bit about the project, Director Schreger? Oh, oh, give me one second, I'm going to have Director Schreger just talk a little bit about the project.
Yes, through you, Council President. So, both residents are correct, there is a lot of history with Canoe Brook Parkway, some of it does predate me, when the last major project, I believe, was in 2005 or '06, which did involve proposing sidewalk, replacing curbs, and repairing the roadway base. At the end of 2022, when the Capital Projects Committee and the governing body opted to apply for the grant, Canoe Brook Parkway was approaching that, you know, a 16-year-old road at that point. The roadway was worn out, there has been numerous drainage complaints that we'd like to improve and repair there. There has been, you know, an unlimited amount of traffic calming requests in that area. So, the grant we did apply for did offer the opportunity to try to fix some of those, those needs, so the decision was made to pursue it, and that's when the grant was received for $1 million early in 2023. The intent was to send out, to poll the neighborhood, because we know there's a lot of topics such as sidewalks that can be very divisive, and we don't know the full pulse, the, the neighborhood, so we only know what we hear, dribs and drabs through emails and just spoken over the last few years. So, we did send a neighborhood letter in September of last year, looking for feedback on various items, extending the median, speed humps, roundabouts, and a few other items in there, hoping to get a real sense of what the community wanted. Unfortunately, of the 100 letters we did send, only 20 did respond, and it was pretty much half and half on every item we had, which did not assist us in preparing concept plans that we could actually present, because we didn't actually know what was desired. We did have a governing body then switched with the new year, so we did wait some, and we have been a little bit backed up with, with workload. So, the desire now of the Capital Projects Committee is that we will host a neighborhood meeting that likely won't have any major plans, just because we didn't have a general consensus, but it will have the survey and maybe some rough sketches of what we could do. And we would have one in the summer, like July, and I know a lot of people are away, so then we'd have a second one in September, just so we can try to get as many residents as possible, and then proceed with, with a plan. Ultimately, even if the road was repaved, which is not the intent, unless it's absolutely necessary, so if we were to put in some drainage improvements, then we would have to, you know, obviously repave where we did dig up the road. But we, we are aware that, you know, obviously, PSENG came in, and we were okay with them tearing up the road, knowing this project would come, we did not know, nor were they required to fully pave it, because we had this grant, but they did. Was great for the residents, because it accelerated when the road was done, but it did interfere with the intended projects we had. I would just highlight that portions of the sidewalk master plan or the installation and maintenance guidelines we have for the city sidewalk network do include sidewalk there, so that is why that's being considered. So, so basically, in summary, summer and early fall, we'll have neighborhood meetings in person to gather more information, to put together a plan. And it might be a very watered-down plan at this point, that doesn't include paving, or it might include something we're just not aware of yet, once we get more feedback from the community.
And it would also include drainage, potentially?
Yes.
Drainage improvement?
Yes.
Okay, actually, hold on, I'm going to, did you want to come back up? Yeah, and then, and then you, Christine.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Louis Gerhard, 112 Canoe Brook Parkway. It's already congested, it's just a bad idea, and I'm going to second their motions, it's just a waste of time and money. This can be used elsewhere better. I just, it's just not needed. There's no point. The roundabout is already there. I mean, there, and that side of the road, right closer to 24, once you get down there, that median just makes everything tight, and you're going to have generations of teenagers, you know, a lot of young kids walking up to the school, Washington, they're going to be teenagers, and then they're going to have to do that, it's just, it's just not a good idea. I just don't see it as a good thing. I hate going down to that end of Canoe Brook. Just keep it as it is, it's beautiful. I don't know why you want to mess it up.
Thank you. Thank you. Christine LeJoy? Hold on one second. Okay. Christine LeJoy, 124 Canoe Brook Parkway. I just want to let Mr. Schreger know that we never received a letter. So, I don't know who in the neighborhood got a letter, but I didn't receive one. I'm also confused, if you approve this ordinance, but then you have the meeting with the residents, that doesn't make sense to me. I would think you would want to have a meeting first, before you decide to do anything, because as you can hear from my neighbors, most of us that are here at least are happy with how things are right now. So, I guess that's my concern, is that, never got a letter, how can you have a meeting? Why would you have a meeting after you pass an ordinance to spend the money? It doesn't make sense to me. And I agree with our other neighbor that, down by 24, it's so narrow when you're driving, if there's a landscaping truck or a delivery truck, you can't get through the road. So, it's a problem to try and make the, the road smaller. You put in a stop sign, two-way stops, you know, four-way stop sign, which I think has worked very well, has slowed down traffic. And there's also been police officers giving tickets in the morning, so that has helped as well. So, I think there are things that can be done for the safety aspect, but I'm, I'm not sure that a major project like this would really be useful for us. But again, it's kind of the cart before the horse. We should have the meetings first, and then decide on the ordinance. Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Boyer?
It's, it's tough for me to disagree with my former teacher. So, to that, to that point, I'm not. So, I, I 100% agree. We should be ripping up roads. I'm tired of seeing roads being consistently dug up. I believe this matter should be sent back to the Safety Committee to work with the residents on Canoe Brook, to find a better way to allocate this money. That's just my, my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Smallwood?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Is there a way to just, I mean, does it have to be Canoe Brook Parkway? I mean, I know it's the grant money, but I know that last year, we used grant money that was supposed to use sidewalks in Mount Vernon, and we took that away from Mount Vernon, and we put the side, we took that grant money and put sidewalks at Hobart Avenue. I don't see why, this could be a similar situation.
Okay. I'm going to give the resident, hold on, I'll come back to that, I want to hear your comment. Yeah, go ahead. Oh, wait, let's make sure you're good. Good.
Barbara DeSantis, 111 Canoe Brook Parkway. When you talk about safety, where the existing Center Island is, many a car has lost their side mirror, because it's so narrow. And safety-wise, I have seen the residents who live down there literally come up the wrong way on the street, because they want to go, they can only go in one direction. And I've seen them, and I'm horrified, but that's what they do. They look, there's no one coming, they just go the wrong way and go back to town in that direction. So, if there's a fire truck, if there's an ambulance, I don't know. Very, very dangerous. So, I have lived there 33 years. We had that one silly, silly, stupid teenagers where they did the drag racing, and that's it. Prior to that, there were no accidents, okay? Since that road has been in existence, because we discussed this about however long, 15 years ago, and there was a police officer who lived on the street at that time, and he looked it up, there has never been one accident. And that used to take you right to the mall, apparently. So, I don't know where everybody gets, oh my gosh, it's so dangerous. I see the kids riding their bikes, I see the kids playing ball, ball goes in the street, they get it. So, I am really confused as to why people who don't even live on it feel, oh, this is absolutely necessary, when you have people like myself saying, we live there, we like it, I raise my three children there, I have two grandchildren who live two doors down from me, they're fine. If it were so dangerous, my daughter would not be on that street. She moved from Karen Way, the little cul-de-sac, and she could get a bigger piece of property. And so, she moved there about four, four or five years ago. So, there you go. She used to ride a bike all the time, kids ride their bikes, I think it's fine as is. Thank you.
Thank you. CFO Baldwin, and then, and then Councilwoman Hamlet?
Through you, Council President. I shared yesterday with the Finance Committee, and this is a, this is, hopefully, I can explain it in a way that everybody can understand. So, from a financing perspective, there is nothing that stops us if council decides to do something else with the money. We can change that. This ordinance is written as an including, but not limited to, and there's, as you can see, there's several paragraphs and projects. So, we do that with the flexibility, in, in case a road comes in at a lower price, and we have money left over, we can fix another road, so you don't have to go and amend the ordinance. So, there's nothing saying that because we potentially adopt this ordinance tonight, that you can't change the use of the funds. That's the first thing. The second thing is, there is a resolution on the agenda following these three capital ordinances, SOAR, parking, and the general improvements. The reason the timing is so important is because we have our 2023 bond, I'm sorry, note maturing on August 1st. So, what we're trying to do to save money in terms of the professionals and what goes into the costs of a note sale, and we typically try to do this, is to combine those note sales. So, we would put these three note sales with the maturing note sale, we'd get a better rate at a better price. So, from a financing perspective, and I'm not talking about anything else, community engagement, grant reallocation, but from a financing perspective, that's why the timing of this is important, unless we want to do a whole nother note, whole different set of costs, and potentially higher interest rates, because we're not combining a larger amount. So, that was a thought process from a finance perspective.
Understood. Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tammy, for your great recap. A couple of things here. I think it was, geez, a year ago where I was actually walking the kids to school on Canoe Brook Parkway because they were falling in the holes that were six or 12 inches deep, and I actually walked the young children to school. And, you know, so it was meaningful to me because randomly Director Schreger and I were going back and forth, and PSCNG came back and ended up paving a road that they had recently ripped up. And so it made a lot of residents happy because the road has never looked better, right, to your point? It's never looked better. So I'm intimately involved with Canoe Brook Parkway. And, but what I will say is, in reaching out to the community, there's a lot of people who don't want the median. People know the road's already been paved. Some want sidewalks and some don't. This is a grant that we don't have to go forward with. We can, looking at the website today and the grant regulations, we have 30 days. Alls we have to do is tell them we don't want to do this grant, and we just squash it. What we don't want to do is squash it right now because we want to engage all of you and look at whether or not there are drainage things that we can fix, whether or not there are some sidewalks. We're a brand-new council here. We have no idea what the pulse of this community is. We don't have to do this. We still have to go out and bid this project, and that requires a vote from all of us. And I think what, as much as I would like to say pull it from the bond ordinance, I think that what I completely respect is that, you know, our CFO and our city administrator have spent a lot of time doing these bond ordinances, and these discussions between councils should happen at the introduction. If we have concerns and we have things that maybe they can adjust or tweak, we should be doing this in finance three months ago, or we should be doing it at the introduction. So we're putting the staff in a bad spot by pulling this from the bond ordinance, as much as I would love to pull it from the bond ordinance. There's nothing I would love more, because I'm not sure about this project. I'm truly unsure. But what I will say is I have asked the chief for crash statistics for that specific area. I think, I've talked to Councilwoman Boyer about really digging in and passing it along to safety as well and having a community. We will have a July meeting, we will have a September meeting, but at this point, I am comfortable passing this bond ordinance, knowing that I'm not necessarily going, I may vote no on the Canoe Brook Parkway, and I probably would at this point. You have my support that we will not move forward without a community meeting in July and September, and we will finalize those dates this week. And alls I can say is just please bring the community out and get engaged, but I do understand all of your concerns.
Thank you. Okay. Are there other council comments? Councilman Smallwood?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I mean, my understanding from what Ms. Baldwin mentioned is we can pass this tonight, but reallocate the funds to a different street. I mean, I know that our sewage, drainage in our downtown, you're saying?
Yeah, I think there's a nuance to this, what you're saying in general in a bond ordinance, so I just want to interrupt on that. And I think that's generally true with any appropriations that we do in a bond ordinance, there's flexibility of moving funds. There is a grant award that this council approved last year for $1 million that was a state grant. So to answer your question, Councilman, about what's the difference between what happened last year on Mount Vernon, that was a county grant, and we were able to come to an agreement with them that they were going to reallocate those funds. It was a little easier with the county. State of New Jersey will not be the case with a grant award such as this. However, there's other funds that CFO Baldwin was saying that we can move, but we're not spending any money. This is, so the difference with what we're doing here with this bond ordinance is it's, there's an appropriation which grants the legal authority to spend, doesn't allocate anything, and then there's the financing component, which is what, if you look at the bond ordinance. And I just want to quickly run through this whole process. There's a capital budget that this council approves, which they did. It's not funded. Capital budget plans are not funded. Now we're to this stage where we have a bond authorization. The authorization is to legally spend on that project, and then there's the financing component of it. We have a $1 million grant that we'll finance. We're not spending any money. This is monies that will come from the state of New Jersey. If we choose, so then the next stage is there's a community engagement with Canoe Brook residents. There'll be as many meetings as we need to have. And then there's a determination, okay, what is the suitable project if we move forward with a project? And then at some point, we're going to have something on an agenda at the appropriate time where we have to go out to bid, and so the council has to authorize that at that point. And then if you do authorize that, then we have to go out to bid, and then it comes back to council to accept the bid. So there's various steps here at this process where at some point this council says, "We don't want to move forward." We don't move forward. We send a letter to the state of New Jersey, and we say, "Thank you for the $1 million, but no, thank you. We're not moving forward." That's where we are. But this, it's critically important to move because this is a bigger, there's a lot encompassing here. We need to time it right. By pulling this, we have to reintroduce an ordinance. It takes you into July. We don't get this lined up with the other, and it winds up costing the city and the residents more money.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Councilman Smallwood.
So by listing these streets into this ordinance, right, we have to do, we have to use these streets, correct?
It's just, it's following your capital budget that you approved. That's all this bond ordinance reflects, is the 2024 capital budget plan.
But the streets that we use the money on can change.
Everything else, except for what we have a grant award from the state of New Jersey, it is specific to that project. That's the difference. So what CFO Baldwin said is correct when we have, when we have bond ordinance and it lists a bunch of streets. And if for some reason one project, and it's not a grant-related award, you can move funds if you finish a project, if you allocated $100,000, you only spend $75,000, and then there's another project that we budgeted $100,000 and you need $125,000. You can move funds that way for different streets. This is more restricted because it's a grant award from the state of New Jersey.
Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet?
I mean, a couple of examples. I think Glen Side sidewalks were on last year, but we're talking about them this year. And, you know, it sort of goes back and forth. We did Bryant Parkway Road last year, but there's still a remainder $25,000 for Bryant, Mead, and Edison. But I think the more important thing is we should be engaging in these conversations around specific streets for the budget for next year. And if we really want to, you know, lay into those details, I think it's an important time, but I think it's a great question, Councilman Smallwood.
Okay. Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. And just to be clear, this is for improvements on Canoe Brook Parkway. So it doesn't have to specifically be putting in a medium, right? We can have discussions on how to improve Canoe Brook Parkway. So my, the thought process is, do we want to give back $1 million, or do we want to talk, do we want to talk to the residents on how we can improve Canoe Brook Parkway in some way? Doesn't, has to necessarily be involve ripping up and digging up the streets, but we can, you know, improve pedestrian safety. We can do other things. But that's why we want to have conversations, right? I would hate to return grant money, you know. So, yeah, so that's why I said let's kick it back to the committees and let's figure out how to best appropriate it.
Perfect. Okay. Are there any other comments from the public that had, no one that's spoken? Sorry. Okay. All right. So just to reiterate, if we pass this tonight, we do not have to spend the money, and you do, and it's going to be community engagement. So, and I will say, the least favorite piece of this project that I've heard consistently is the median. No one likes the median. So that's, go ahead, Councilwoman Hamlet. Everyone I've talked to, so. Councilwoman Hamlet?
I was just thinking that I wish we could do like a 200-foot radius letter, Rosie, if we ever talk about Canoe Brook Parkway again, because, but I guess it would just be on the agenda. So we'll get, we'll get a meeting date for July.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Councilman Plousky?
If there was no such thing as this grant, would this bond request here be $1 million less than it is right now?
CFO?
It doesn't reflect the $1 million grant. It reflects about $750,000 of that grant. And look, there's costs that we built in for paving a road. We're not paving the road, so there's monies that will obviously save from that point, but that's, yes, it would be reflected in the ordinance, correct?
So, but we have work that we need to do. If we're going to borrow this money and pay interest on it, we do have projects that we need to do.
Through you, Council President. I get a list of capital projects from every department head. We all see it. You all approve the capital budget plan, so I'm not out there and don't know if that needs to be done. I have to rely on everybody else. To clarify, we're not financing the grant portion of this. And so what I said before is that you don't have to spend any money in this appropriation for Canoe Brook as far as the appropriation goes. The grant is a different story. That would have to be either let go or, you know, on the off chance, slim chance that the state would let us reallocate.
There's no financing component to this.
Right.
It's reflected in the appropriation side, which is just the legal ability to spend, but we're not financing anything, so it's not money that's going to be sitting in there that we're actually paying interest on.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think it's important to note that when we pass this bond, Councilman Barton, you said this too, that there are projects that are baked into this ordinance that you may not agree with, or Councilman Miniger also may not agree with, but we are passing the ordinance in order to be able to bond, and there's going to be multiple bites of the apple in order, for each project that starts to come up, to say that whether we want it or not. So this is just the bonding portion of it, and we will have community engagement, and we can vote no when it eventually comes to this dais. So, and if we're having a July and September meeting, we are way out from any type of spending, or, yeah, project, I should say. Okay?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll just reinforce what I said earlier, which is, which is, I've been clear in my opposition to certain capital projects. I am in support of this bond ordinance because it is a funding mechanism, and it includes a package. And when we get to the point that we are going out to bid and we are going to finance those projects to which I am not a fan, or I am not, I am opposed, I will vote no at that point. I will say, though, I will just add on this Canoe Brook Parkway thing. You know, I'll add, I think sidewalk installation and maintenance policy, the number of stop signs, the number of flashing beacons, the number of sidewalks added represent a huge increase in pedestrian and traffic safety over the last several years. And I think pursuing and receiving a $1 million grant is an incredible achievement on the part of the city and city staff. And I was advocating before that we get those meeting dates on the schedule, and we figure out exactly the right thing to do with it that makes sense in that community. So I think that summarizes my thoughts on this.
Please just say your full name and your address.
Mary Ann McLean.
Oh, wait, wait. I'm sorry. Hold on one second. You get three minutes.
107 Canoe Brook Parkway. I just have, I'm curious, how did Canoe Brook become the target street here? How did that happen? We have never had complaints. We've never had an accident. How is it the Canoe Brook was singled out? That's what I want to know.
Okay.
Anybody know?
Director Schreger, thank you.
Yes, through you, Council President. So at the time in 2022 when we applied for this grant, Canoe Brook Parkway was in need of repaving, and that's before we knew PSCNG would be coming in. It's one of the reasons we allowed them to. If you took just the cost of paving the road, doing nothing else because of its size, it's probably a half a million dollars. So I think obtaining a grant for a half million dollars to repair a road that the city taxpayers don't have to pay for is a good thing inherently. So that was very good. We do receive a lot of complaints about speeding and traffic calming and pedestrian safety. So we did send the letter in September. It was very benign and just kind of identified, these are some things we're considering but not limited to, and basically said, "We want to hear feedback from you." Based on that letter that went out, yes, I could say the only one that was opposed was four to six, people did not want the median extended. That doesn't even mean we want the median. We were just trying to throw out as many options there, because we are really trying to be, you know, conducting a survey of the neighborhood to do what's best fitting for the neighborhood. We also, when we do send the notices out, we only opt to do just the immediate neighborhood who has a physical property border on the street, and we do that for a couple of reasons. If we were to send it out broadly, all of Washington School will probably say, "Let's put in sidewalks," and that's not really fair to the Canoe Brook residents. Not that we oppose other input, but we want to hear just from the people who are most impacted by it. We grab just the list of every property along there from the tax office, and we send the letter to them. I know historically we've heard complaints about the city of Summit Post Office. Some could get lost. Our envelopes are nothing special. They could get put in junk mail, but that is what we do, and that's all we really can do because we just send it to the owner of the property. We do blast it out some through social media sites to the information office. That's what we would do moving forward for any future meetings going forward, just to schedule them. We would send the letter out, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I understand that you did request a bond for Canoe Brook Parkway specifically. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And the grant program, I will just answer to you, Council President. Generally, DOT is not looking to fund cul-de-sac streets, low-volume streets, streets that don't connect to anything that generates traffic, be it pedestrian or vehicular. So they do like the streets that connect to county and state roads, parks, schools. So we do have a limited, despite having like 260 roadway segments, it gets reduced in which ones are eligible for grant funding. Obviously, a project that may have traffic calming, that has a lot of paving, that has drainage, is one that obviously scored very well, and we got a very nice grant. It's the biggest grant we've received, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thing scares me. I know. It does scare you. It wakes you up, for sure. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Well, I think my takeaway from tonight is we, I think as a council, we should commit to maybe not doing any more projects unless we really engage the community and have a consensus on certain things. And I know, I'm sure, best intentions, I think Director Schreger, you make a great point, paving that road would have been a half a million dollars, so that does make sense. But I think we have to start with the community and, you know, really learn about the community and what your needs and wants are before we go upon, any projects that we think might be a good idea, as well, intended as they may be.
I don't think anybody opposed division.
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to close, unless there is any other comments from the public. Okay. I would like to, and counsel, I would assume no. All right. I'd like to close the hearing. Councilman Miniger, your second ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Clerk Lickertis, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 24-3314, bond ordinance appropriating $2,655,000 and authorizing issuance of $2,528,000 bonds or notes with the city for various sewer utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit County Union, New Jersey.
Councilman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. This is a bond ordinance appropriating $2,655,000 and authorizing the issuance of $2,528,000 in bonds or notes for various sewer improvement, sorry, sewer utility improvements, including down payments on those projects as specified in this year's sewer utility budget. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
A second. Okay. The hearing is open. Any council comments? Public comments?
Good evening. Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, at 11 Sunset Drive. And these are really questions, both for this and the next ordinance. I note that there's a 5% differential between authorized and issued, and I'm curious as to whether that's the cost of issuing the bond or what that 5% is.
Okay. CFO Baldwin, please.
Through you, Council President. That is the 5% down payment requirement, so we don't finance that portion.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it? All right. Thank you. Thanks. All right. Any other public comments? All right. Oh, come on.
Peter Lejoy, 124 Canoe Brook Parkway in Summit. Just a very quick note. I think going forward, we need much more transparency and much more information, given this age of technology on our website about these things. This grant application could have been posted on the web- This grant application could have been posted on the website. It wasn't. These budgets, we need to start sooner, and we need to provide more information to the public so the public knows what's going on. We have a very highly intelligent, educated city, and they're capable of understanding this and deserve an understanding of it. And as I went through the budget, and I spent a lot of time on it this, this year, I really think it was, it's very lacking in what we put out to the public in terms of lists of projects, a little more detail. If I went to borrow $50,000 to improve my house, I, the bank wouldn't lend me $50,000 in the construction loan unless I had a plan, I had a budget. I think that type of stuff should be done ahead of time, and it should be published instead of just bonding money and sort of figuring out as we go along. I don't think that's an efficient way to spend taxpayers' money. And I think at the end of the day, it gets wasted. People don't know what's going on. And this is why we had this confusion for this particular bond and the ones going forward. It's very simple. A lot of the questions could have been answered by communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the public? Okay. I'm going to close the hearing. Oh, sorry. Come on. Sorry. Oh, wait. Hold on.
Just very briefly. I do want to say I totally agree with what Mr. LaJoy just said. I think that when I read the ordinance and it says, list all the project, all the projects, and I have to compare it to the table where the projects are listed in the budget, it becomes difficult. And it would be somewhat easy to do, to have a table that says, because I agree, all the projects are listed in the capital budget. I've seen them before. That's not the question. The question is, check, 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 oh, this one is not in. This one is in. It should be a lot easier to be able to track these things. So I totally agree with what Mr. LaJoy said. So, thank you.
Thank you. I like when people agree. Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Just a quick question. Can you just confirm Director Schreger in line D in this one? The 41 Chatham Road. I didn't notice it in the finance meeting, but we've already replaced that garage door, correct? For 41, didn't we just do an emergency or something last meeting or two meetings ago for the new garage door, or am I thinking of something else?
Yes. No, through you. So what the DPW has been doing over the last few years is budgeting each year for garage door replacement, because if you go to the facility, there is 10, 12. So we're just, instead of just doing a half million dollar garage door replacement project, this is, they chip away each one. Yes, last year we did have an emergency situation where one of the doors was hit, not a newer one, which is good. So we were able to use some of that money to do those two, but we're still just going along, doing them systematically.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's helpful. I just thought there was maybe only two garage doors or something.
Okay. Okay, we're going to close the hearing. Clerk Lickatis, next ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 24-3315, bond ordinance providing for improvement of parking facilities in and by the City of Summit and County Union, New Jersey, appropriating $60,000, therefore an authorizing issuance of $57,000 in bonds or notes of the city for financing such appropriation.
Okay. Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is a bond ordinance appropriating $60,000 and authorizing the issuance of $57,000 in bonds or notes for various parking utility improvements, as well as down payments on those projects as specified in this year's parking utility budget. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Councilwoman Hamlet, do you second?
We need a second.
Second, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Hearing is open. Are there any council comments? Are there any?
Well, I mean, a couple, I think, well, I think we talked about the K Lot before, but I think we're, I think we're passing this, but we're not saying that this is exactly for the K Lot. I think we're, can we just talk about what else this could be used for? For parking, it would be for the, the entrance to the?
Yeah, I think we can reassess that if there's any additional improvements that maybe weren't contemplated, and it's not restriping. So I think we just, Parking Services Committee could look, relook at that and advise it. We're not, not moving forward with that. So whatever we can do within the legal bounds of our authorization, then we'll do it.
Through you, Council President.
Counsel.
Yeah.
This is also to improve the Broad Street Garage. The, I guess there, there's a ramp there that has, that's cracking, a railway railing that needs to be fixed as well, as well as striping, restriping the K Lot, and then other equipment, and then upgrade to our parking lots that, that we can make, so.
Good. Okay.
Cameras, me.
Good. Wait, are you looking at me?
Yeah.
Oh, wait. Councilman Barton.
Yeah. So just, for academic purposes, Michael, if we did not fund parts of these projects, right, we don't fund them, we've still borrowed the money, right? So then what happens? Can you just describe to the community the process of what happens over the course of the next several years when we authorize borrowing, do not authorize spending, get, have extra there?
Correct. Okay. Yep. So what happens is if we finance something and we decide we don't move forward with a project, it's something we actually finance, it's, you'll see, you'll see something that comes forward to you in a resolution canceling those funds, and those lapse into the general capital fund balance. And that's just used to, it comes back as a revenue into our budget, and we're paying off our debt service, and that's what happens.
And that's the following year, or?
Sometimes it could take years if we decide, right? So sometimes they're just sitting there. They could be two years. Sometimes there's remaining funds in there over five years. We go through this every year, and we, Tammy and Aaron sit through this multiple times during the year to evaluate projects. Are we done? Are we not done? Can we put it on our list of cancellations? So that's what we do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council President.
Counsel.
Mr. Rogers, this is different than the previous one we were talking about, right? This is not a grant. Like, this is a bond ordinance, correct?
This is not a grant.
Okay. So we can change the appropriations for this?
What, what you can do is, because you're looking at, we're including Broad Street work, there might be some additional work that needs to be done there. I mean, that was an initial assessment that we did last year that the, the former director had put in as a capital project request. If there's additional improvements at the Broad Street garages that are needed, we can spend some of that money if we decide not to move forward with the K Lot, that what we've allocated there.
So we, I mean, but we can allocate this money for other projects as needed?
No, it's really specific to what you can use it. Like, it's broad enough, but it's, it's parking service, you know, it's parking infrastructure-related.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. So within, you know, I mean, if you, any of us have ever been in our parking lots or garages, there's plenty of things that we can do with $60,000.
Correct.
To improve safety.
Yes.
But, real quick.
Councilman Barton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Just to, to the previous several speakers' points, Diego, Peter, we shouldn't just borrow money because we'll find a way to spend it, though.
Absolutely.
And, and the point is, and the point is, we have to spend it in a fairly specific way.
Correct.
And, and in the time it takes between when we borrow it and when we get it back, we're going to accrue interest on it.
That's correct.
So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Great. Any other comments? We're good? All right. We're going to close the hearing then. Clerk Lickatis, please read the next ordinance.
Ordinance 24-3316, an ordinance to establish the 2024 salaries, wages, or compensation of and for the officers and employees of the City of Summit, County Union, New Jersey.
Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance establishes 2024 salary ranges for all city employees, both union and non-union. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
A second. Okay. Hearing is open. Any council comments? Public comment?
Give them more money.
Wait. Can you come back up and say your full name and your home address again?
Yeah, Louis David Gerhard, 112 Canoe Brook Parkway. Our police officers are heroes. We need them. And it's a shame, but yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right. If there's no other further comment, we're going to close the hearing. Clerk Lickatis, next ordinance, please.
Ordinance 24-3317, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic Section 7-14, loading zones.
Okay. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number 24-3317, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic Section 7-14, loading zones to establish a 15-minute parking area on Glenwood Place for delivery drivers. This is a side street off of Springfield Avenue, directly next to Hardwell Brothers. And this is just to establish, there's several businesses there that need loading and unloading, and we're, we're trying to move that traffic away from the Summit Avenue and Springfield Avenue areas. So by creating this space is giving those businesses an opportunity to have a place to, to park their vehicles.
Yep. Excellent.
So I move to open this hearing.
My second.
Great. Any council comments?
Council President.
Yep. Councilman Boyer.
I'd like to direct this question to Engineer Schreger. So, Aaron, this is, this is a part of a greater project for our downtown loading zones, correct?
Correct. Through you, Council President. So, I mean, this is a, a one-off, which is, is separate from the, you know, the larger picture, that we do have a plan in circulation that does seek to add additional areas and create some, some better defined areas for people to load, though maybe not a designated loading zone. And we do have, I believe, four or five do exist in town, in the downtown, that is. So yes, there is a larger plan, and then we hope to, as we do the traffic signal program, or even just separately start striping those as well, so.
Thanks.
And in your opinion, will this decrease congestion downtown?
Through you, Council President. That's a trick, tricky and loaded question. I, I can, human behavior is, is so hard to predict, so even if we make these loading zones, what it could do is when you clearly define areas, it makes it easier for Parking Services and the Police Departments to enforce, and will assist those who want to follow rules a little bit better so they know where they can and can't go. But I, I can't say this will, you know, indefinitely create a traffic free downtown, but yes, but, but it will assist, yes.
Good. Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet.
I, I would say if, if anybody can figure out the area, which is right outside of Barbacoa, like that where literally every day there's two tractor trailers parked there every single day, and I think I call and email. I don't know what we need to do, but we have to either enforce that or figure out a way. I don't think they can get under that bridge. I think we've talked about that. I don't think there's the clearance there. But we have to figure out a way because it's, it's just jamming up that whole street. I don't have an answer, but maybe.
Yes, and just through you, Council President. Unfortunately, one of the challenges of a thriving downtown is, is the truck issue. And even when we've made some of these loading zones, they are trying to get from site to site, so they, they do like Maple Street quite a bit. It would have to be enforcement. We did look at loading zones there, and it's just, it's narrow there, so it's hard to put one because you, you would create a hazard by, by allowing them to park there. That said, they do park there, so it would have to be enforcement. Generally, they try to be quick, but we created a loading zone on Summit Avenue that I don't think I've even seen someone just standing there just, just to like make a cell phone call. It's never used, ever. It's just too far. They don't want to do it, so.
Got it. I know we also talked about time, trying to limit the time that they actually can do deliveries so that it would be early in the morning, but then it's also hard to dictate to truck, you know, drivers and delivery people on timing. Like, if they're coming from somewhere, they might be running late, so even that was a little precarious. So we do have to figure out this problem, though.
Through you, Council President.
Yep.
The plan is to designate these loading zones so that we can enforce. So if we have designated loading zones, then the, we discuss this with the chief and in the Safety Committee, we can then, the, the chief will then deploy patrols to say, hey, you have to park there. Have conversations with the delivery drivers and say, this is where you park. If you don't park there, you're going to be taking it. So this is, that, this was the holistic plan.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilman Boyer.
Yep.
Just a question. Do we, do we have that ordinance in place already? Like, do we, if somebody's dropping off in a truck, not in a loading zone, can that be enforced now?
There, I mean, there are illegally parking, right? So the, the truck pulls up, they're not in a spot. They're in the middle of the street. They're, and they're not, so if you have a designated loading zone, right, you're saying, you're saying, hey, you have to move your truck there, or you're going to get a ticket because you're illegally parked.
Right. But that's happening now, still, anyway, right?
Well, we don't have the designated loading zones, though. They're not clearly, they're not clearly designated.
I mean, we have some. We have some, right?
Don't talk over each other.
Sorry.
It's okay.
We have some, but the plan is to, to, to make them pronounced, right?
Yeah.
And so that we can then.
Is there anything you want to add, Director?
No, I could just say through you that, you know, one good example is the intersection of Woodland and Springfield, and you have a boxout of crosswalks there. Now, the state laws, you can't park within the intersection. You can't park within a crosswalk, but that is a favorite spot of, of certain delivery companies, who I won't name it. They're brown vans. So that's an area where it is illegal now, but if we did add striping there now, it's, it doesn't make it any more illegal, but maybe that might convince a few people driving to say, all right, I won't do it this time. It makes it clear for Parking Services and Police to see that's a blatant violation. So, so those are little instances we could do, and by no means could we make that a loading zone. And we have to make loading zones that, that meet the MUTCD and any regulations and guidelines to ensure safety, so, but just clearly defining them where we can. But yes, there is, there is four or five downtown already, but clearly there, there could be more, but at the same time, you can't just have a town of loading zones and there's no parking either, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any final comments? I'm going to move on. Okay. Would the public like to comment? Nope? Okay. Then we're going to close the hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance for final consideration.
I think we have one more.
Oh, we do?
3318.
Oh, yes, we do.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, will you read the final ordinance?
Yes. 24-3318, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic Section 7-25 Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic and Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.4 Regulations.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number 24-3318, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic Section 7-25 Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.4 Regulations. This is regarding the manner of parking in parking lots and garages. And what I will state is, after lengthy conversation at our last council meeting, I do plan on making a motion to reject this ordinance and introduce a revised ordinance at the June 24th meeting. So I move to open this hearing.
Yeah, my second.
Okay. Do I take a roll call?
No, at this point, you allow anybody from the public to speak.
Just to speak? Okay. Would anyone from the public like to speak?
So, I'm Diego Fuegg again. I have
And your address date.
Nine Argyle Court, again. I have to say I agree fully with Councilman Palowski and Councilman Smallwood. Both of my cars, in accordance with New Jersey law, have license plates in the front and in the back. And there's no reason why my preferred mode of parking, which is backwards, should not be legal under the circumstances, given the conversations that were had last week. So I encourage you, Kevin, to go ahead and vote no and reintroduce it next week, or in two weeks, or whenever it is, addressing the readability of license plates. Thank you.
Good evening. Danny O'Sullivan, 33 Crescent Avenue. Thank you, Council President, Mayor, council members. I really enjoyed the discussion last meeting. It was very riveting. You know, honestly, it's not that important, though, really, how you park, right? You want to park however you want to park, however you want to leave a parking lot. I think the bigger issue is, is the license plate readers that we're paying for, that we have paid for, that we've invested in. And so we have a, we have scores of cars driving around town without a front plate. And so, uh, they're breaking the law, right? And if we enforce the law, then this really is a mood issue, right? No, no, no ordinance needed. People can park however they like. And I think the further problem is, these cars are luxury brands. And what's troubling about it is these are targets for theft. And when cars are stolen, it's not good for anyone. And when cars are stolen, it's not good for anyone. And when stolen cars are able to evade our network of license plate readers that we've worked so hard for, it's not good for anybody, and it's not good for our overall safety. So, you know, law enforcement agencies around the state, parking enforcement agencies around the state, toll collectors, right? They all, we've all come to rely on license plate readers. So the bottom line for me is, just enforce New Jersey state law, so we can realize the full capability of the license plate readers that we've worked so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We are going to close the hearing.
Okay, can we do a fast one?
Okay, so, yeah. Sorry. I just, I think so, I just think it's important to have some dialogue on this, just because we're going to...
Again?
I just want to make sure, I know, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait. Even though we're...
Yes, because I think that, I think I have to, after much consideration, I do agree with Mr. O'Sullivan, in that we're supposed to enforce, I've gone back and forth, it's like terrorizing my mind over the last two weeks, I know nobody wants to hear about it, but I, I'm going back and saying that I think I would have to agree with Mr. O'Sullivan if we're enforcing it until it becomes, until the law changes. You know, just recently, we're learning that the license plate readers, there's been some, I guess now criminals are using car rental agencies, and they're taking the license plates from those car rental agencies and swapping them out. So I think to Danny's point, when you're reconsidering this, that's great, talk about it in your committee, but I, I kind of tend to agree, Diego, I agree with you in some small part as well, but I think at the end of the day, enforcement is really important, and I'm, I'm still on the fence on this one.
Councilman Palowski.
If the whole point is, right, that, that the parking staff can see license plates and decide whether somebody paid, can't we just put a sign up that says, you know, you park without your license plate visible at your own risk?
Go ahead, Ed.
Okay, let me pause on that thought for a second. Councilman Miniger.
No, I, this time, I want everybody else to have more comments, I was just going to...
Yes, Councilman Smallwood.
So I, after more deliberation during our committee meeting, Council Miniger and I, you know, we discussed this, and we took all of our colleagues' comments into consideration, and this is the reason why I will be voting no tonight on this ordinance. One of the things that we are working with right now, and with also our attorneys, on the language of the ordinance, so that there, even though New Jersey does require front and back license plates, states like Pennsylvania do not, and obviously, we have out-of-towners that come and visit Summit, because it was such a great city, and use our parking lots. So what we're working on right now, before the next council meeting on the ordinance, is the language in the ordinance about, if you do not have a front license plate, then you will need to do head-in parking only. So we're working on that language, so that it's correct in the ordinance itself, but also an easy way to communicate that to the parkers in our lots. Stating the ordinance on our sign is, most people are not going to read, right? So we've got to figure out a way, the right way to state that. And one of, and just to give you an example, one of the things that we're looking at is head-in parking only for vehicles with one license plate. Everybody knows that your license plate is typically in the back, if you only have one. That's just one example, but again, we're going to be working through that with our committee, so if you have any suggestions on the language that we can use in our parking lots, so that everyone, so that it's very clear, right? In the ordinance, we're going to leave that to our attorneys.
Okay. I'm still digesting "park at your own risk." I would recommend saying, park, the license plate must be visible from the lane of travel. I would say that if people, if you're following the law, actually, in New Jersey, which the high-end luxury vehicles like Tesla, which are EVs, so I want to be mindful that it's usually our electric vehicles that don't have, that people opt out of putting a license plate on the front. But if you're following the law, you will still have a license plate on the front, so if you back in and your front is facing out, if you're following the law, then your license plate will be visible for the license plate reader. So, okay, I'll, Councilman Vartan, and then Councilman Boyer.
I just want to, as the lone no vote a couple weeks ago, I just want to say, I just want to say, I'm not going to say, I told you so, I'm just going to say...
It was recorded, so.
I'm just going to say, thank you.
It was recorded.
I'm just going to say, thank you, to all my colleagues for listening. I appreciate the fact that we understand the flaw, and that we're going to reject it, this is the right thing to do, get it right, instead of getting it done quickly, and I'll make my pitch, license plate out.
Oh.
How's that? Does that work? And if you don't know what out means, if it's unclear...
You actually had the perfect language. You told me, you said something visible from the lane of travel.
The lane of travel.
I don't know that that's...
I don't know if that's concise, but a police officer told me that.
That's it, that's all I'll say.
All right, I'm going to go to Councilman Boyer first.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, to make a statement about enforcement, and before we start going down the road of having our chief directing our police officers to pull people over that have only one license plate on their car, and fining them or giving them a summons, I know that there is current legislation in our, in our state about removing the requirement of two license plates, and I wonder if our city solicitor is...
I'm very familiar with the pending legislation, because, I don't know, maybe I like to have one license plate, just saying. But there is, there is legislation out there to match a lot of the other states that only have one.
So...
And a lot of the readers, by the way, when you go over George Washington Bridge, they can read both back and front. Because now, if you notice, most of the readers now are up in the air, they're above, so when you're going through like the tolls and all that, all the cameras, they can pick up by with back and front.
So to sum, just to sum it up, I'm a big law enforcement proponent, right? However, I just want to make sure that we don't negatively impact our residents, and then the law passes, that removes the license plate, and we just summons, you know, all of our Tesla population.
I wasn't trying to call them out. Councilman Boyer first, and then Councilwoman Hamlet.
Pass.
Oh, pass, okay.
I do remember Councilman Smallwood, you telling me about the out-of-state plates, and now it's triggering me to maybe not agree with Mr. O'Sullivan anymore, so I remember that, and I was with Danny, but now I'm back with you.
Well...
Yeah, 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 you can go.
Uh, Council President, I just, and this is to also, Mr. O'Sullivan, we will try, we will enforce this, right? So it's, if you, if you do back in and you don't have a front plate, you will be subject to, to a ticket. So we will be enforcing that, and, but, again, there's going to be out-of-state cars coming into our parking lots, that we need to state that very clearly, so that they pull head in first, so that our license plate readers and our parking authority can, you know, just drive by and not issue anyone a ticket.
Okay, all right.
Can we close this hearing?
Just, just as a recommendation, because if the law does pass, and there's one license plate, right? I recommend that we start looking at this in our current technology and how that impacts it, right? And so we should, you know, we should be, we should jump on this, so.
Yeah, well pointed, well taken. Okay. I would like to close this hearing. Okay.
A second.
All right. We had no other comments, right, from the public? Okay, that's good. All right, let's move on. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance, the first ordinance for final consideration.
Twenty-four dash thirty-three thirteen, bond ordinance appropriating five million five hundred and fifty thousand and one hundred dollars, authorizing issuance of four million ninety-five thousand one hundred dollars, bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Okay, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. Having just had the hearing on this ordinance a few minutes ago, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
A second. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next ordinance, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-four dash thirty-three fourteen, bond ordinance appropriating two million six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing issuance of two million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, bonds or notes of the city for various sewer utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilman Miniger, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. Having just had the hearing on this ordinance a few minutes ago, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
A second. Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Councilman, I'm sorry, Clerk Lickertis, please, read the next ordinance.
Yes, twenty-four dash thirty-three fifteen, bond ordinance providing for improvement of parking facilities in and by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating sixty thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing issuance of fifty thousand, fifty-seven thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the city for financing such appropriation.
Excellent. Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. Having just had the hearing on this ordinance a few minutes ago, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
A second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-four dash thirty-three seventeen, an ordinance amending the code chapter seven, traffic, section seven dash fourteen, loading zones.
Okay, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you. After having this hearing on this ordinance, I move to have this ordinance for, move, I move to have this ordinance for final consideration.
Through you, Council President. Clarification, we're voting aye if we want it removed. Is that what we're voting on? Are we voting nay?
Not this one, the next one.
The next one is the one that...
That's okay. No, it's good clarification, though.
Loading zone.
Okay, then aye. Aye, second.
Second, okay. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Clerk Lickertis, last ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-three eighteen, an ordinance amending the code chapter seven, traffic, section seven dash twenty-five, regulations for the movement and the parking of traffic and municipal property and board of education property subsection seven, seven dash twenty-five point four, regulations.
Excellent. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. After having this lengthy hearing on this ordinance, I move to have this ordinance for final consideration.
For, to reject?
To reject.
Is that your motion?
I'm sorry, I would like to make a motion to reject this ordinance, and introduce a revised ordinance at the next council meeting on June twenty-fourth.
So we're voting aye if we agree with the rejection?
To reject, yes.
Okay. Then I second.
Can I have a point of clarification? I think, I think what we have to do is vote no. Yeah. Right, on it, as it was originally introduced.
I want to interject on this.
Is that, yeah.
Are we voting no to reject?
You just vote no on the ordinance.
Yeah, just vote on the ordinance.
Vote on the ordinance.
Vote on the ordinance.
I'm sorry, I just want to clear up, because he's making a motion to reject, so...
No.
No, it'd be just, it's just a motion to vote, motion, second, vote no.
Perfect.
And if it fails, then you reintroduce it.
Okay, so we're voting to, on the ordinance.
Vote on the ordinance.
Okay, before, okay.
May I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Couldn't he also just not move on it?
If you, well, what you could do, what you could do, the only other thing you could do is you could do a motion to table.
Yeah, table it, that's right.
You could table it, and it dies. You can vote no, or you can table it. If your goal is to amend it, why don't you just make your motion to table, somebody second it, and table it.
I'd like to make a motion to table, second.
Wait, no, but that would be, that would be a yes vote. Right? Am I right?
Yes, you're table.
Hold on.
The table overrides any other motion, and it dies.
Okay, and Councilman Miniger should second, because he's the...
That's fine, it's already been seconded. It's okay.
So you're tabling the motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
And then, and I say, roll call, vote?
Yes, and then if you vote yes...
To table.
Table, it dies.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor to table it.
That's what you're voting on.
Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries.
Yes.
Okay. It's nice to have a little interesting interaction here. Okay. Ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
ID number one-one-three-four-three, an ordinance amending the code chapter two, administration, article four, departments created, section two dash fifteen, Department of Police, subsection two dash fifteen point one, establishment.
Excellent. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is, again, ordinance one-one-three-four-three. This is a request being made, in part, due to the recoderification of the agencies, the police agency, our police department organizational table, which would increase the Summit Police Department staffing levels from forty-seven sworn personal, sworn officers, to fifty sworn officers. Allocation of funding for two additional officers has already been budgeted, with the passing of the twenty-twenty-four budget at the May first, twenty-twenty-four common council meeting. In addition, the third position is to reflect that an officer, detective, who was already replaced following a permanent assignment to the state PBA office, that is Detective Freeman, for which the city has an agreement for his salary reimbursement. I move to open this ordinance for a final hearing.
Moving to introduce.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry, I'm moving to introduce, yes.
Councilman Palowski? Councilman Pulaski?
Second.
Okay. Excellent. Council comments? All right, public comments?
No, 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 no public comments.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, it's getting late. No comments.
No, that's not the reason. It's just for, for council.
That's, yep, got it. Council comments, roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Okay. The hearing will be held on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Um, capital projects, uh, council, um, sorry, Clerk Wikaties?
ID number one-oh-nine-seven-seven. Repeal and Replace Chapter Twenty-Nine Protection of Trees.
Okay. Councilman Smallwood?
Uh, no.
Hamlet?
Hamlet. Sorry.
Yeah, so, I just noticed a, an error in this. I, we talked about it today and I just found it thirty seconds ago, Director Schreger. Can we just make a scribner error in the introduction? So, in the ordinance summary, it says this ordinance repeals and replaces Chapter Nine, Protection of Trees, to provide for permitting requirements regarding private tree development replacements at a tree diameter, it says six, but I believe that should be twelve.
In the summary, she said.
In the summary.
Through who?
It's just the summary.
Oh, no, no, that's actually for, um, Mr. Giacobi.
Matt, this goes to your office, right? So...
Or is it a scribner? Okay, so, let's ask this. So, the diameter of the tree, it's actually...
It's going from twelve to six.
To six inches?
It's going from sixteen to twelve.
To twelve.
And in here, it says six.
Correct. So, what I believe happened for you, Council President, is that this, obviously, this ordinance has taken, you know, many months to, to evolve to where it is. There was some changes, so, the memo appears to be right, the ordinance itself appears to be right, so I believe the summary is just wrong. So, I defer to our council if we can just proceed. I would hope so, because yes, it is supposed to be twelve.
You can absolutely proceed, because the summary is not the ordinance.
Yes, okay.
That's fair. I just want to say, going forward, we have to get this stuff redlined, because I can't look through fifty thousand pages for one, it's just impossible. I don't know. I just think it's just really hard. I just noticed it thirty seconds ago, so, I think anything that is taking massive changes from one year to the next, as, as all of us, for all of our committees, I think, we just have to really, um, because you're trusting that I have already looked at this, which I have, and I just noticed it, so, it would just be helpful to see redlined versions for all memos and everything going forward, I think.
Okay.
So, with that being said, I'd like to introduce ordinance with that one scribner error, uh, ID number one-oh-nine-seven-seven. This is ordinance summary, this ordinance repeals and replaces Chapter Twenty-Nine, Protection of Trees, to provide for permitting requirements regarding private tree replacements at a tree diameter of, what should say twelve, rather than sixteen. It clarifies the language exempting hazardous trees from fees or replacement requirements, updates the violations and penalties to reflect current tree care costs, adds prohibited species, and updates and clarifies language throughout the ordinance. I would like to move this ordinance for introduction.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the hearing will be on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Onto resolutions. Councilman Miniger, your first finance resolution.
Thank you, Council President.
Mm-hmm.
This is number one-one-three-two-seven, and this resolution authorizes the issuance of bond anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed thirteen million, two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, one-hundred dollars. These notes are to temporarily finance capital expenses. I move to adopt this resolution.
I would like to second. Wait, yeah, I'm second, second.
Okay. Any council comments?
I just have one.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's important to talk about this for just one second, I'm pulling it up. Uh, we talked about this in finance, but I think it's important, and Ms. Baldwin was so kind to answer my question in finance the other day, um, because I said it's really hard to understand what's in that thirteen million, and if you look in this summary in these resolutions, all of the ordinances are explained for what that thirteen million dollars is, is for. So, for example, Cedar Street is in this thirteen million dollars, and there's several other things, but if you really want to get in the weeds with what this thirteen million dollars is, all the ordinance, ordinances are reflected in that memo, which was really helpful for me, you know, as a newer council member, so, I just wanted to share that with my fellow colleagues, in case you wanted more detail on it.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comments?
So, Diego Hoyt, nine Arkell Court.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I was talking with Michael Rogers not too long ago, and he gave me the best explanation for why it is wise at times to have some debt as a city. Debt allows us to match a payment with the use of an asset. So, a long-lived asset, uh, it gets paid over a long time. I noticed, I did read the detail of what's in the, the resolution, and I noticed that some items on the bonds have considerably shorter lifetimes than the bond maturities. Uh, in the ordinances that was approved earlier today, we have computers, we have cameras, we have, uh, what the fire department pretty much considers consumables, which is the all-important personal protective equipment. Their lifetime is a lot less than the duration of our bonds. So, I am asking if there's a way to come up with a mechanism that allows us to not shift the burden of paying for those consumables, so to speak, in the lifetime of a bond, onto the future generation of Summit residents, and instead figure out a way for those short-lived assets to be expensed reasonably quickly. Why should somebody in twenty forty-four be paying for a computer that was bought in twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four? I apologize, I only got to read these things today, so, I don't have a, a formal statement, but I really encourage us to look, for example, at the idea of separating in these bond anticipation notes, the short-lived assets, and make sure that those short-lived assets never get put into a full bond when the bond is bonded, because that way, we do what Michael precisely was trying to explain to me, which I think is a really good idea, of matching the usage of the asset with the duration of the bond. And this is precisely why I was asking how long it takes, uh, until we repave a street or paint a parking lot, because this applies also for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Through you, Council President?
Absolutely. Councilman Miniger?
So, that is an interesting idea, and I was wondering, parking, does parking do that? And utilities, they have their own kind of, um, uh, not, not saving account, they have their own fund. Do they use that for, um, in order to not take out bonds on longer-term items? Say if they're buying new, new computer equipment for inside their vehicles, or new license plate scanners? Is that something that they would do, they would use that kind of fund for? I'm just trying to think if there is an example of what Mr. Hoyt just gave. Already happening.
First of all, the, all of the useful life is determined by your bond council, and it's by, it's determined by law, so, where you might, or, and it's first, it has to be a minimum of five years of a useful life in order to finance it.
Counsel.
There's some that you could bond for thirty years, and there's some that you could bond for five, for five years.
Your time is up, mister.
It's averaged down, and that's what you say. My time is up, okay. Um, my, that's why the useful life, when you look at these, might be something like twelve-point-seven years, and it's just the average, so, I can understand conceptually how you, you're paying for this, but sometimes, you're not really paying for something that would be a lot longer, it's actually averaged down, and that's when you have to pay off the bond. So, for your, for your question, Councilman Miniger, um, there are some things that you could, there, there's monies that they have budgeted in their, previously budgeted for capital projects, like, you could do that in your capital improvement fund, you can budget a hundred thousand dollars. And so, there's times when they will finance it from those funds that were budgeted, like, like we do. There's some things that we budget in our capital improvement fund, and then we will spend it through some type of acquisition, but it doesn't always have to be financed, there's, there's things. But it could have a useful life of longer than five years, some, in some instances.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are we good? Counsel? All right, I'm, I'd like to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, uh, resolution, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Okay, this is ID one-oh-three-five-four. This, uh, sorry. This resolution, um, this resolution is awarding the bid, sorry, awarding the bid for the Village Green Phase Three Improvement Projects. The lowest responsible bidder was Espatada Inc. in the amount of five-hundred-seventeen-thousand, nine-hundred dollars. Espatada has completed various capital improvement projects for the city in a satisfactory manner, including Phase Two of the Village Green, and additional positive feedback was received from their references. The scope of this work includes the replacement of the existing sidewalks in the southwest quadrant of the Village Green, additional landscaping, lighting, and drainage upgrades. This project is being done in coordination with the Maybe Playground Replacement, and in accordance with the Village Green Master Plan. This work is being funded by a grant from NJDOT Transit Village Program. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments?
Through you, Council President?
Absolutely. Councilman Miniger?
Uh, I just wanted to run this past, you did mention Maybe, which is great, because I, I remember this being kind of a, not really a prerequisite, maybe a, like a co, you know, happening at the same time. Is that the case? Is this going to allow us to move forward with, uh, improvements on Maybe Playground?
Through you, Council President. Likely if this is awarded tonight, they could start construction at some point in the summer, and I literally was just reading an email on getting the plans for Maybe finalized, so that will lag behind probably three or four months, maybe end of the year, uh, starting into the spring, so, um, close, but not, you know, at the same time, which has its, you know, pros and cons, but, yes.
But one big thing out of the way to let Maybe finally happen? Okay.
Excellent.
But I would say, uh, Councilman Miniger, I highly, I had a lot of advocacy for you and Councilman Smallwood today in that sense of urgency regarding as soon as we get this project done, like, we should already be looking at the bids for Maybe, and I really hope that Maybe gets done this fall, and I think unless we have a sense of urgency around that, we're going to be in twenty twenty-five, which would be very disappointing. So, I think all of us should keep holding each other accountable, and hopefully, we're not torturing Director Schreger, but I think that we can get this done in the fall, and it would be great to do that. Uh, one other comment I wanted to make, just for, since we're talking about funds and everything, the one thing I did notice, um, in this specific one, is just in case you're looking at your ordinance for the newer council members, we're pulling funds temporarily from different accounts, so, we had money in a West End account that we're not planning on using, so, you know, it's important to understand where these funds are coming, and one of the questions that I had was, well, when we get this money back from this grant, where do those funds then go? Because why would it make sense to put it back in West End when we don't have a project listed for that? So, I think it's just worth some discussion as we continue on these finance conversations, and just in the interest of transparency and education, I just wanted to mention that, so...
Great. Thank you. Okay. Uh, any public comments?
Thank you, Council President. Danny O'Sullivan, thirty-three Crescent Avenue. So, um, I read through this in the packet just yesterday, so, I don't have, like, fresh in my mind, but the, the vendor or the bid, the winning bidder previously worked on the Village Green, the, the pathway in the northwest quadrant, northwest quadrant, is been, has been really bad, since almost it's, the top layer is, is kind of off, and it's been terrible for a long time. The, so, I hope he didn't do that, you know, that one. So, uh, that would be nice to confirm. And then, uh, I'm through the Village Green quite a bit. The pathway in this southwest quadrant seems totally fine. The pathway in the Maybe Playground area, that's totally different, that's pavers, so, I was thinking that would need to be done, but maybe that'll be done later on. And then, the pathway in the northeast quadrant is totally fine, but it's really just the pathway in the northwest quadrant. So, the one, the pathway that we're talking about tonight in the southwest quadrant, I mean, I guess the landscaping can be done, but that pathway seemed totally fine, and I just hope that this winning bid didn't do the pathway in the northwest quadrant that really deteriorated almost immediately, and it's still, if you walk it, you'll see, it's just not acceptable, so, thank you.
That's a good question. Director Schreger?
Yes, through you, Council President. So, this contractor, Espatada, did the southwest quadrant project, which is, has the War Memorial, and we're very pleased with it. I just don't remember offhand which quadrant up top was done first, but one of the first ones, we did have some trouble with the, the product on top. Now, it's not, it was done with the intent to try to keep it somewhat historic, so, it's almost like a synthetic gravel surface, or it actually is a gravel surface. Freeze thaw cycle does impact it quite a bit, so if it needs some repairs, we'll do it, or we'll just slowly start removing it, because it just becomes a maintenance issue, so...
Okay.
But yes, this contractor did the southwest, and we were very pleased.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through you, Council President. Director Schreger, can you also talk about the one that Mr. O'Sullivan was talking about with the pavers? Because we're actually moving that, we're actually relocating that a few feet up for Maybe, correct? I'm trying to jog my memory back to all those meetings.
Yes, through you, Council President. Yes, that, the, the east-west walkway that exists right now, that basically goes from Summit Avenue to Elm, that does move north somewhat closer to Broad Street to accommodate the, the playground, so, the good thing is that these projects were done, they're not being built in sync, they weren't designed in sync, so we don't have the issue of putting something where it's like, oh, why did we do that? So, essentially, it could be one project, we have different funding sources, so, really, this is the part, the Transit Village Grant, that will go ahead and do, um, the walkways and the lighting and some landscaping, and then the playground will do that over there, but yes, that walkway will, will be replaced as, as well as the east-west path, so...
Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Well, I think it's important to just, um, understand that we did save costs in Maybe by doing some of the things that are in this grant, so although there is a little bit of lag time with Maybe, it, it did make sense to, you know, work hand-in-hand, as painful as it's been, but we had, did give a lot of money, and, you know, they've done a lot of work, uh, on this project, so... All good comments, so...
Okay. Great. Any other comments? Okay, let's vote. Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, this is ID 11260, which will authorize the city of Summit and the qualified purchasing agent. We will be awarding professional services to Serenian Edwards, Boozak &amp; Nolan LLC for the 2024 Affordable Housing Council in an amount not to exceed $40,000. And also, the DCS director also advises that the contract needs, this is really the meat of it here, we're advising that the contract needs to be increased to accommodate anticipated work for the remainder of the year, and recommends amending the contract for an additional $30,000 for a contract amount not to exceed $70,000. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Other council comments? Nope. All right, public comments? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Hamlet, your final resolution.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. 11308.
Just a second here. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay. That's fine, okay. Apologize. Yes, this is 11308. I'd like to move, sorry, this is to declare a vacancy in Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, Municipal Disposal Unit for one full-time senior transfer operator, and this was pending closed session. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next resolution, Councilman Plowski.
This is Resolution ID number 11333, to expand membership in the Affordable Housing Committee. With round four of affordable housing approaching, council sees a need to assist the municipal housing liaison in identifying locations in town where affordable housing is feasible. This resolution adds four resident-at-large positions to the committee. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay, council comments? Nope. Okay, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Plowski, your second resolution?
This is Resolution number 11339, to confirm the balance of the mayor's appointments to her homelessness task force. Madam Mayor?
Well, I have really great news. My, my computer just died.
Oh.
So I don't have the list in front of me, and...
Do you have the list, Bob?
Bob, do you have it written right?
I do.
Or I can do it from memory.
I have it here.
I'm sorry.
To the, for a one-year term as a representative of grace, Paulo Haverovich, I had it in closed session, from Family Promise, Ghaleen Donovan, from, also from Family Promise, Karen Olson, resident-at-large, number 5 of 5, Beverly Brown, Summit Downtown Business Owner, Joe Sui Solano, and Business Owner-at-Large, Harold Escobal.
And then for the chairwoman, we will appoint Leah Griffith. Okay. Are there any other council comments?
Yes, Council President, I just would like to say that this is a, this is a tremendous undertaking by the mayor, and it is a very popular task force. There are a lot of people who want to, who want to be on this, and this, the selectees are a very diverse group of individuals, and I'm really excited about this, and I, that's...
Okay. Mayor, would you like to say anything?
I'm just looking forward to getting the first meeting on the calendar so that we can make some progress. So thank you for all of our volunteers and for everybody for confirmation.
Thank you. Public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're going to vote on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can we pull something out? I just have a question.
Sure.
Sorry.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
I just want to make sure there's not a conflict on, there's probably not, but for the accept, accepting the donation of funds to the Summit Police Department for the Elks members? Is that a conflict, or no? Because I thought we couldn't vote on things that we're all involved in.
Accept it, oh...
But you're not, you're not deriving any benefit from it individually, so I see no conflict. It's a donation that's going to the police department for public good, so I see no conflict whatsoever.
Okay, that was it.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Council comments? Public comments?
Bellamio, Nine Webster Avenue. I just want to say for the police trading cards, I was that kid in elementary school who had like two full sheets of them and like 200 of them. I think it's a great idea. I think kids these days still love baseball cards, so I just want to comment and say I'm really happy that we're still doing it, and I think that was a highlight from all my elementary school. All my friends are always asking police officers, I think engaging with police officers is so important now to any day, anytime, so I am standing by that, so thank you for whoever's doing that again, and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Thanks.
Still here, it's wonderful.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto council member comments.
Council President? Yes, I have a couple of committee reports.
Yep.
There was a article in social media stating that there was a concerning trend that has engulfed the city of Summit after multiple reported attempted car thefts over the past few months. I just want to point out that this information is inaccurate. I spoke with the police chief, who confirmed that we are moving in the right direction. While the council acknowledges that this is a problem that's not disappearing, which is the reason why we added police officers to specifically target this activity, it is incorrect to say that there is a concerning trend that is engulfing our town. I will say this, it's important to note that some of these past motor vehicle thefts and thefts from inside vehicles were the result of residents leaving their key fobs in their vehicles. So I urge everyone to remain vigilant and continue safeguarding your vehicles. Crime has three components, some theory says, opportunity, rationalization, and pressure. While we cannot affect rationalization and pressure, we can reduce the opportunity. So, I, I'd like for our residents to remain vigilant. Regarding the Summit Health Department, as mosquito season is upon us, we urge all residents to take precautions. Please use EPA Registered Insect Repellent when spending time outdoors, and ensure that any standing water is removed from your properties. This will help reduce the mosquito population and protect our community's health. We are still dealing with the West Nile virus. I don't know if you all remember that. And my last report is from the Summit Housing Authority. Recently, our fire department responded to a carbon monoxide alarm at one of our subsidized housing in Glenwood Place, and upon arrival, they've encountered several residents who were experiencing symptoms, and one who experienced flu-like symptoms for an entire week. One of these carbon monoxide alarm systems had actually been taken down after it had went off. The problem was the boiler, and I believe that these alarm systems, and the mayor pointed this out too, should be hardwired. I have to tell you that I am concerned about the condition of our subsidized housing in Summit, and I have been for a while now. While we focus on affordable housing, we are neglecting the current housing that we have here, and our housing is in serious need of rehabilitation, and should be the focus of this council and this community. And when I heard about the carbon monoxide issue, I have to tell you, I have friends and I have family there, and my heart dropped, and this should be a reality check about the dire straits that our current subsidized housing is in, whether it's Glenwood, Vita Gala, and Weaver Street, and there should be some definite focus on those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Councilman Boyer. I do want to say, I agree with you. We really need to focus on the housing authority, and we've been in there quite a few, quite a bit, so. In terms of the, the article, the safety about the crime, I will, I agree with you. I also think we've done, in Summit, a lot of other initiatives, so we did the ordinance, but we also did the safety awareness, the police have the home assessments, so I think that the car thefts around the state are still an issue, and it's always in the back of my mind, I have to tell you. I'm glad we hired police officers. I think there's a multiple initiative, pieces to the initiative that we've been working on, so thank you for bringing up the art.
And by the way, there's more to come, right? I mean, we're, you know, as a new council, we're six months into this, and we've made tremendous strides, but that doesn't mean that this, this fight is over. As you know, and the mayor knows, we, we have stuff that's, you know, that, that is, that's up for back, coming up soon, so we're, you know, we're still, we're still pushing along, so. And before we move on, I just want to thank Councilwoman Hamlet for connecting me with HUD and working with me to actually get vouchers that the city can have on hand for our residents who are in need of housing, and we're working to do that.